Welcome to the January 26, 2016 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is recording tonight's meeting for us, and they are looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. And we thank Tim Rowley for taping tonight's production for us. Superintendent Follins, we do have some announcements for us.
I do have some announcements this evening. The next school committee meetings are February 9th and March 8th, 2016. Athletes Love to Read will be held at Maple School on January 27th, that's tomorrow, at 6:30 PM. The High School Musical Grease is held on January 28th, 29th, and 31st. There is no school February 15th through 19th due to Washington's birthday and winter break. There is a half day of school on Tuesday, March 1st due to Teacher Professional Development Day and the Presidential Primary Election. There are half days of school on Thursday and Friday, March 17th and 18th due to parent teacher conferences, and there is no school on Friday, March 25th due to Good Friday.
Thank you very much. Do we have any correspondence?
We don't have any correspondence for this meeting.
Okay, and how about gifts?
Yes. Motion to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts. East Hampton Savings Bank for the donation of $100 to EHS Renaissance. Parent Council for sponsoring and facilitating the SOHOP and donating proceeds of $1,173.25 to the class of 2016. Helping Hand Society for the donation of $1,000 toward tutoring high need students and helping students that cannot afford fees and costs associated with being a high school student. Helping Hand Society for the donation of $2,000 toward books, creating the Michelle Matt College and Career Collection in the EHS library.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're very grateful. This is the public speak portion of our meeting where we invite anyone who would like to come speak to us to do so at this time, and it doesn't look as though anyone is here to do that. So we will move on to a very special award presentation.
And it's Matt Rigney who's coming to the podium to give a special award to one of our staff members.
My name is Matt Rigney. I'm from the Collaborative for Educational Services over in Northampton. Gail Cannon and I have worked together for 15 years. I'm the School to Work Coordinator at the Collaborative in addition to holding a couple of other posts. And there was a movement started in the Regional Employment Board and at the Collaborative this past year to just kind of come up with an award and recognize the good work that Gail Cannon has done for as long as I've known her. I've worked with a lot of people in a lot of different roles across a lot of range of the at-risk and school-to-work area for students in the Valley. And I don't know anybody who gets more done or who is as dogged in her job as Gail Cannon. And if any of you have ever worked with her, you know what I'm talking about. She works relentlessly for students at East Hampton High School and also especially for at-risk students. When I used to run the reunion center right here in East Hampton, Gail was unrelenting in making sure that kids who needed that reunion center got there. Somehow she found a way to get them there one way or the other. So this is an award that's been presented to her by the Franklin Hampshire Regional Employment Board, and it reads, "In grateful recognition, 2015, Gail Cannon, Career Counselor Extraordinaire, for your unwavering loyalty, dedication, and many years of service to the youth of East Hampton and whose lives you have made a profound difference. Our heartfelt thanks."
Everybody, Gail, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you for letting me present.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, would you like to say anything?
Well, sure. I want to thank Matt Rigney and the Regional Employment Board for thinking of me and thinking of the people of East Hampton and the students of East Hampton. I'm very thankful for that. I'm thankful that I have a great family that lets me do kind of what I need to do when I need to do it or I see need to do it. And I'm thankful for my school system who also sees that, that if something's needed and we need to do it, we need to help, that we're there to do that. So I appreciate the recognition, and I thank you all very much.
And we appreciate all the work you do.
And Gail?
I want to take a picture.
Oh, you want to take a picture? How's my hair?
She's just taking the award.
Nope.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. We've been grateful to have you. Okay, we'll be moving on to our subcommittee reports. I don't believe the Finance Subcommittee has met. Is that correct? Yes, we have not met. Okay, not yet. We'll be doing so in the next couple of weeks. How about the Policy Reviews Subcommittee? Do we have an update? Nothing at this time. Okay. How about the Collaborative for Educational Services? Has not met yet. Okay, we're very early in the year here, so things will be rolling along soon. And our student representative is currently at a dress rehearsal for our upcoming East Hampton High School play, musical Grease, which is going to be performed on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this week. So we're sad to miss her tonight, but we certainly support her efforts in the musical and look forward to seeing that production. And if anyone would like tickets, I'm sure if you go to the website, you'll see the number to call for tickets for any one of those performances. It's Thursday at 6:30 PM, Friday and Saturday are 7:30 PM, and Sunday at 2:00 at the high school. So we hope you'll come.
And I just have one update that I can give. I attended the boys' basketball game last night at Hampshire Regional, a great rivalry. And our boys were successful. They won the game. They're still undefeated. It was an amazing game. I think it was 66-68, was it?
Wow.
Yes, so we're just so proud of their determination and their skill and of our coach, Brian Miller, and how he's trained our basketball team. It was just a great, exciting event. The place was packed, by the way. So it's awesome. That's great.
I'd like to.
Deb, can I offer another update? And this will also explain Alexis's absence. I just wanted to read the roster of the students in the AP US Government Class taught by Kelly Brown, who this Saturday, and I don't know quite how, I think there's more than just Alexis among this group, who is also involved in the production of Grease, and to imagine all that they're going to accomplish. But on Saturday, they will testify both in the morning and in the afternoon at a statewide academic competition based on their understanding of the history, philosophy, and development of the US government. And I apologize in advance to the students and to their families if I say any of these names incorrectly, but it's a short list. It's extraordinary. Having done this myself a number of times with my students, and we will be there as well, Williston will be there as well on Saturday, and we look forward to competing with and against East Hampton. They're always terrifically well-prepared by Kelly because of their works. So I'd like to recognize, oh, and the piece that I wanted to say is, to go with a group this small, I've only ever done that once. And this calls upon some of these students to be prepared, to know as many as six different presentations, and to be prepared to defend what they have discovered. Anyone can read a script, although I imagine they will read them extraordinarily well. But in addition, they then have to put aside their notes, and a panel of judges will ask them to further explain, to apply, and to extend their remarks. And it's really an authentic form of assessment. It's an extraordinary activity. I've served as a judge as well as a coach, and I can testify personally to the effort that these folks have put forward. So I wish them all the very best. And their names are Liam Bernier, Andrew Connolly, Chloe Crabbe, Gabriel Downer is also a member of the class but has a conflict and will not be able to attend, Jacob Dragon, Sarah Gallant, I hope I've got that right, Hunter, I should know how to pronounce Hunter's last name. My middle name is LaFevere, and it's spelled very close. Can you help me on that, Kevin?
LaFevere? LaFevere?
Is it LaFevere? Thank you, and I apologize, Hunter. My family name is LaFevere, and it's spelled almost the same way but pronounced differently. Brandon McCormick, is it, it's not White? There's an extra I, or is that a typo? W-I-H-I-T-E? Or is it McCormick White? All right, I'll double-check on that, Brandon, and I apologize. Morrissey, Ale Okaton, Raj Patel, oh, wow. Hmm. Straleek Peck? Sorry. Morgan Tab, and our own Alexis White, who serves here. And as I say, a number of these folks are Alexis, Hunter, Jacob, Andrew, and Liam are not just testifying once for three questions, but twice for six. It's extraordinary. And on top of the play, I think it's, you know, there are six schools. Anyone in the state can do this. There are six schools in the state that choose to step up and test themselves against all the others. I think it's extraordinary. This is not East Hampton's first time in 2013, if I have the math correct. They won the right to represent the Commonwealth and did so with distinction in Washington, DC. I hope that in February we'll be able to find time in their busy lives to have them come here and do a demonstration of their work. I think everyone in this community will realize, and this is a paid political advertisement, you can't find this at a charter school, and you can't find this at a choice school. You can only find this in the Valley, right, at an independent school or East Hampton High School. And I think that says something extraordinary about where East Hampton High School chooses to play academically. So let's hope we can congratulate them on a terrific performance. I will let you know, because I will know on Sunday how they did. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else for student activities that anyone would like to share? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So the first item on my report this evening is the Meals Payment Procedures and Guidelines draft that you have in your packet. And this year, when our new Director of Foods, Director of Business Services came on board, she began to review the food service program with Andrew Stratton, our Food Services Director for Chartwell's. And it became clear that our outstanding balances for meals payments were too high and growing. And so it was Dale's recommendation that we develop guidelines to use consistently across the district and that the expectation that the responsibility for these procedures will be shared by everyone, building administrators, food service, and the business office, in order to have this program run more effectively and efficiently. These procedures are meant to be preventative and not punitive. In Dale's former district, they used these procedures and had great success with them. So it seems like it's a good idea for us, too. Our concern is that without published consequences carried out consistently, we will continue to grow the deficit that already exists. And Dale reports that this is an issue across the state. It isn't only here in East Hampton. But she is optimistic that with these new procedures, we can turn that deficit around and stem it and have it disappear. I want to assure the committee that we already have safeguards in place to make sure we don't have hungry kids and that all families who need help are getting it. So there are all kinds of, as I say, safeguards put into place so that we don't have any children going without a lunch. I brought this before you tonight for your endorsement, for your, so that you're aware of it, and also for your support as we implement these procedures. Any questions?
I have a question. Previous to now, was there any, like, formal procedure in place, or was it just a kind of case-by-case?
There was, but it was managed only by the Food Service Department. So he had a regular procedure that he used to notify families whose meal deficit were growing. There's also a free and reduced lunch program that he managed. So what we're really trying to do is take everything that was done, make it more consistent, and make it more personal, more personal contact with families, and make it, again, consistent across the district. So it was done, but not with the consistency that I believe we can put into place now with these new procedures.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When Dale noted that this is spreading across the Commonwealth, is there a difference between school districts that continue to provide food service in-house and school districts that outsource the provision of food service?
It's a good question, Peter. I did not ask her that. I certainly could ask her and see if she has some information on that.
Yeah, I think that would be useful. I'm curious to know whether or not the folks who are making these decisions are influenced at all by their impression of whether or not the impact is felt in the district or whether it's a company that's providing the service and whether that influences the decision-making. I would also say that as somebody who was long ago before we ever had outsourced our food service, you know, the former mayor and I had an ongoing discussion about vocabulary. One person's deficit is another person's investment. And I appreciate your efforts in this to point out that no one is denied a good meal. It is always tough to talk about a self-funded food service program given the economic reality that so many of our families face. And I think we all know and are searching for a way to make sure that this, what used to be a deficit in the budget discussion, really, as teachers would tell you on the other side, you know, a well-fed student behaves differently in school, learns more, and enjoys that experience. And as hard as the numbers are, if we can, you know, and I don't know if we can discriminate, it's very difficult to find out from what we have here whether the people who are in arrears are people who are on reduced lunch or whether it's something else that's going on. Obviously, folks who are on the free lunch program, this is not affecting them. So our families that are most at need wouldn't be the subject of this policy.
Well, there are a variety of factors that come into play with this, one of them being the application for free and reduced lunch. Until those applications are in place, then we aren't reimbursed from the state. So we carry those meal costs until those applications are filled out. So sometimes there's a delay. So that's another thing that we're working on, is trying to support our families and give them the assistance that they need to make sure that they get their applications filled out in a timely manner.
And I have to say that I've been really impressed with Andy when he comes and speaks to the committee. I mean, he really goes way, you know, over and above for the nutritional value of the meals. That seems to be, you know, one of, something that I've noticed, that I'm really, he gets very excited about it, but I'm always excited about how much he concentrates on the nutritional value of the meals.
Yes, exactly. And on the welfare of our students. And you're absolutely right, Peter, all the research shows, and we are well-aware and support the fact that our children are not going to be successful in school if they're hungry. And so we make sure that no one goes hungry in our schools.
I would encourage, this is, I would favor endorsing this tonight. I would encourage the Policy Subcommittee, which I'm a member, add to our agenda that we periodically review the process by which the systems are put in place for setting prices and communicating that with families. And, you know, I think everyone, from Andy through all of the staff that work in the schools and including everyone here and their teachers, we're all trying to figure out the same thing. You know, as this policy points out, you know, it's sort of the old argument when you say, you know, that we don't want money that's earmarked otherwise for teaching and learning to cover the gap. But we know that if the gap exists for genuine need, that it's going to affect the teaching and learning. So it's sort of a false dichotomy there in a way. It's really, it's really all part of a, part of a whole. And I know that using food services, Williston uses a food service as well. I think this is a trend in all institutions. And I think, you know, everybody's being encouraged to think like a business. We've talked about the need in a competitive market with charter and choice to think like a business. But when it comes to certain basic needs, I think that we're wise always to keep the goals that you've expressed, you know, in the forefront and say that we want anyone who's hearing this discussion to understand that this isn't a debt collection society where you're going to be cut off from good nutrition and good education. Those things are assured, we just need to figure out a way to make it work.
That's right. That's right. Any other questions?
No, but I think that's why it's really important that on the draft, the very first paragraph addresses those issues, you know, right up, right up front.
We thought it was important to start that way.
Thank you.
Okay. The second item on my report, in my report, on my agenda, is the East Hampton High School Program of Studies. And I have Kevin Burke, our interim principal here, to discuss the Program of Studies with you and to answer your questions. I know you all got it in your packet. It's very detailed. And Kevin's going to try to pull out the pertinent information and then also be available for any questions you may have.
Good evening. Nice to see all of you. Well, I want to point out two things. First of all, for our boys' basketball team, which is doing great, I also want to point out that our coach reached his 200th win two games ago. So actually, last night was his 201st win. So kudos to Brian Miller for reaching that point.
And they're going on to the next step now, to the finals, is it?
They have some more games, but yeah, they'll be on to the finals. Yes.
I thought that game decided that last night.
They qualified for the tournament with that win, right? That puts them, for sure, into the tournament.
That's what we're hearing.
Yes. The other thing I also want to point out with all the other great things going on at East Hampton High School are the graduation rates just became public throughout the state. And our graduation rate at East Hampton High School is near the top. We're at 94.3%. So besides all the other great stuff going on, having a graduation rate that is that high is definitely impressive. And it definitely should be shouted out there that we are graduating the majority of our students, so.
And Kevin, didn't you tell me that in, looking at the data, you believe that there are only other, two other schools that have higher?
Yeah, when you put it in order, I think there was only two other local schools in Western Massachusetts that had a higher graduation rate than us.
That's awesome.
So we're on the right track.
Awesome.
Now I can get to the programs.
Yes.
I'm going to go through some points. Every change in here is highlighted in maroon. And if you have any questions as I'm going through, I can give you the page numbers that the points are on. Feel free to interrupt me and ask questions if you need to. The first is on page six. We are changing the social studies graduation requirement from 16 to 12. And one of the reasons why we want to do that, and we had a long conversation, I had a conversation with the superintendent, I had a conversation with the Social Studies Department, is as our faculty has decreased in size over the past six years, our numbers have increased. The cohort that came in freshman year is large, the cohort that's coming in our next freshman year is also large. And from a scheduling standpoint, for that last class, basically, when you have 16 credits, students need to take four social studies classes. That last class became a requirement which was pushing our class sizes to too large. Our Social Studies Department is an incredible department. It's a very strong department, as Peter pointed out with what was going on in Mrs. Brown's class. And the demand for those classes are high. And then when you put in the requirements on top of it, we just, it's more of a scheduling issue than taking away the credit itself. And we didn't want to have that locked in. And when we looked over the, when I looked over the Program of Studies and went through this with my Guidance Department, that was one of the things we discussed, is what are some of the things that are locking you in from a scheduling perspective that are making it more difficult to keep the class sizes down? And that was one of them.
And Kevin, this still meets the Common Core standards.
It does still meet the Common Core standards. And if you look, our science, our science is 12 credits, too, which is an MCAS-tested subject, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, because I'm a social science teacher and because I love the work that Jared, Brian, Rose, and Kelly do at the, at the school, I, this is one of those places where we're, we're suffering because of, not just because of the credits, but also because of the success and how lean in operation that we run. So again, the argument for, you know, when people talk about what's the real impact of the budget, here we have, in effect, a change driven in part by realities that are outside the desires of the faculty who teach there. We really, in an ideal world, would grow that department by another full, FTE, another full-time teaching equivalent because of the demand and because of the rich coursework that's offered and the kinds of things that we've seen recently and before. So, you know, I just want to remind folks that when, when you see these numbers, it's because of the success. It's an internal success that's constrained by an external reality.
I agree.
I do also feel, I just feel it's unfortunate. I totally understand the situation, but I know we just have a fantastic Social Studies Department, and the courses that are offered are amazing, and it just sort of breaks my heart that they're not all forced to take all of it because it's, it's a great program. And so, I mean, I understand, but I just feel the need to articulate. I feel a little bit sad that some kids won't be taking that fourth class, and that's unfortunate.
The next page is page 11 and 12. We are no longer doing virtual high school. That was, that course was eliminated last year due to the loss of our School-to-Work Coordinator position that happened. And we were getting free courses through that because that person was also teaching the course. So what we do have in place, though, is a dual enrollment course. And the dual enrollment course has, it's from local colleges, HCC-Stick are two of the colleges, but students can go to any of the local colleges. And they are online or on-campus courses for our students. So our students are still getting, not virtual high school, but they are still able to take college-level courses online. So that option is still available.
And for folks who aren't looking at the report, the standards that you require both as a prerequisite and the insistence on satisfactory performance in them ensures that even though it's a virtual educational experience, there's, there's great quality control.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
I just wanted to mention, for Nancy, will you keep track of this sort of information of some of the things that we lose, like, because we don't have the School-to-Work Coordinator, because we don't have the extra social science teacher? I mean, some of these things that are lost in the past.
Every year, we keep track of.
And we have all the Program of Studies dating back, too, so we can keep track of that.
I just want to make sure that all ends up in our summaries in the future.
The next thing is on page 16. And this is the Communication Skills and Contemporary Lit. This is, this is just mechanics. The course is offered every other year on either even or odd number of years, instead of every year changing it to when it's going to be offered. So that's just a mechanic as far as editing it goes. That's on page 16. On 17 and 18, for English 9 and English 10, the English Department wanted to change the course description to better reflect what's being taught in those classes. And then we move on to page 25, 26, and 28.
On English, can I just make the note, too, that?
Yes.
Speaking of outstanding programs, English 9 and English 10 are, I just speak from personal experience, are phenomenal. I just have to throw that out there.
And our data supports it, too.
They are great.
If you look at our MCAS data, it definitely supports it.
Programs, yeah.
They're reading the Iliad, the Odyssey, they're studying Shakespeare, right? Those are parts of the canon, and for all the criticism it takes, they've persisted for a long time, and it's terrific that our students are working with those texts.
Ms. Follins, you're a.
Yeah, we have a great, we have a great English faculty.
An outstanding teacher. Yes, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, people just need to come. See it, it's, you know?
She's a truly extraordinary teacher.
And we have an amazing high school. There are two ways about it.
Sorry for the side commentary.
Nope.
No, those are welcome.
It's welcome.
Anytime. Those of you who've experienced, had students in our high school, I think it's wonderful to hear these things.
So pages 25 through 26, and also 28, the Early Childhood Practicums, that was just a change in clarifying final exams, and also in one of them, a prerequisite for recommendation from the Guidance Counselor, more mechanical than actually curriculum-based. On 27 and 28, in our PE classes, actually give credit to the East Hampton Fire Department through a local grant. They have brought us what is called a CPR in Schools Training Kit, which is a hands-only CPR with the intent that they want more residents in the town of East Hampton to be able to be first responders. So. So the fire department, we met with them, they brought us this kit. And Mr. Miller was willing to put it into his freshman PE class. So every freshman that comes through, except for some of our C-Tech students that don't get freshman PE, every freshman that comes through East Hampton High School will be trained on hands-only CPR.
Nice.
The other, the other change in that is in the Life 101. There will still be CPR and first aid in the class, but there will not be, certification will not be available in that class.
Can I just ask the question, what, what is the difference for why they were certified before and they won't be able to be now? What's, what's changed?
The certification process got a little bit more difficult to handle. And it, the certification was offered, but wasn't necessarily part of the course. So it just became more of a complex issue. So it's easier just to say we're offering the CPR course, but not the certification. The modern PE band and chorus, it's actually something that was been in there in the past. For our band and chorus students, they actually go through an A-B day because they have to do, it's the only way to fit band and chorus into our high school schedule. Currently, right now, this year, we had publications. But as we looked at it, that meant, that meant that band and chorus would basically be stuck with publications for four years as they went through. So the freshmen that come through have to take the publication course. But students, it at least provides another option in another class for those students to take, matching their band and chorus.
Nice.
Then page 36. The pre-calculus used to be that it was grades, offered only to grades 11 and 12. The math department felt strongly that they want to open that up to 10th graders also.
Kevin, I noticed that in, in a couple of other places, there was an expansion of elective or course offerings to 10th graders. And I just wanted to second that. I know that a lot of folks who are, you know, academically ambitious and they, and they do the coursework and they're, and they're excited and they're ready to go, that, that 10th grade year, you know, given what colleges are doing with senior year, you know, beefing up our offerings in the 10th grade year really helps. Because so often, decisions about postgraduate work, if they're going on to further academics, is determined by the work that they did as sophomores and juniors. It used to be, in the ancient days, you know, your junior and senior year really had a bigger impact. But with so many folks applying early decision in September, October, November, having these options for students to start so that they then can take a stronger course in their junior year. And that sets them up to be much more attractive candidates for colleges as, in their senior fall.
So it says here that the prerequisite for the 335 pre-calculus, is the Algebra II and a score proficient are better on the 10th grade MCAS? But it, can it?
That, there, one is the 334, the first one is an academic, the other one is an honors class.
Okay, so then it wouldn't, would it not be open to the 10th grade? Because they haven't had their.
It's or, isn't it or?
It's or.
Or, okay, or better, okay.
That's, that's actually a good question. I think that actually might have been something that was overlooked when we looked at that change. So that's something we could look at as far as, maybe we can go back to the eighth grade MCAS and see what their scores are, or what their score is in a, in a previous grade.
Okay.
That's an actually excellent point, thank you.
Thanks.
Page 39 for life science. The, life science is a biology class that we're going to be offering. It emphasizes on strategies to pass the MCAS bio. It's going to be a little bit slower-paced class than in a regular, regular biology class. With the intent of, you know, doing some inclusion and co-teaching models in that classroom with some special ed direction, so. The next one is the forensic science class, which is on page 40. The change on that is being open to ninth graders. And talking with the science department, there's no need for the previous science strands to be in there as far as the, or science, biology, or physics in order for them to take it. It also goes with what we are trying to do with our criminal justice pathway. Within that grant, we're required to open that up to all students within that pathway, so. The next one is the AP Chemistry. This, this is page 40. This was actually a request of the AP Chemistry teacher that he felt that he could actually do this course in a semester instead of a full-year course, which is great because that opens him up to teach another course, which is where actually on page 43, Inquiring Mind comes, where he wants to do a basic concept chemistry course. So, once again, we're providing, providing more courses to students at different levels, which is great. And, you know, one of the conversations I had is can we maintain, maintain what we're doing in that AP Chemistry course? And he felt shrill, and he's taught this course for a while and had great success, so.
And that'll be, it'll be great to get a follow-up report on, on how that goes through in its execution and sort of taking a, a look down the road at what the criteria are. I, I agree, I like, and the Inquiring Minds description and the, and the three topics that they'll focus on, it sounds like a wonderful opportunity. You know, this sort of goes back to what Deb was saying a moment ago. The necessity to create an option by, by shrinking the amount of time we devote to another one makes me just, I just want to be cautious about this. And I hope that, that we'll revisit how, how's it going and that, that that's closely monitored. I have, I have complete confidence in the decision, but I always think the confidence going in, it's great to verify it with, with a sense at the end that, boy, that really did provide the same quality experience for the students coming out.
The next is the robotics class on page 43. The, the main difference there is we're changing that from a quarter class to a semester class. It's, it's hard within our block schedule to run too many quarter classes because we have to have quarter classes that match up. And once again, a conversation with the science department, they felt that that could be a full semester class. So we went in that direction. We move on to page 44. And we're on the social studies. One of the classes that, and this was actually requested by the social studies department, is to no longer have, offer American studies. And the reason being is with the criminal justice coming in, it requires certain classes to be offered. And so they can only offer so much within, within what they have. And so this is the class they decided to kind of take off their plate so they could offer the classes within the pathways of the criminal justice system, so.
Was it less popular?
What's that?
Was there less interest in it?
Yeah, there was less enrollment in it.
Thank you.
The next one is page 48, which is AP US Government Politics. Once again, that's a every-year change. Then we're on page 49, which is AP US History. The change in the course there is last year, they actually, the college board changed the course requirements and they changed the test. So this course change reflects the change that the college board wanted in that course. And then we're on to page 51, which is Special Education. And in every part I looked at, obviously, I sat down with the parties, I sat down with the special ed director looking at this. Ashley and, and Ms. Wilson, the assistant principal, we sat down and then looked at these. The special education, the enrollment determination that was said here really is based on the determination of the special education team, which is why we changed it, and we took out the building support team. And that just reflects the way things actually occur at the school and the way that the special ed director wants them to occur, so. Page 52 through 53. You'll notice when you go through, and this is kind of mechanical, you'll notice ILC, Excel, ALC, which kind of defines our special ed courses. Due to new regulations on transcripts that we send to colleges, we're not allowed to actually specify those classes. So we're taking them out of the program of studies, changing it in our power school. And that way, when we send out transcripts, it just will reflect a English class or a science class and won't specify that as a special education class.
That why the, the reference to autism and intellectual disability just struck from the.
Yeah, that.
ADA.
Yeah, and, and some of the changes we've also done, we've also done as far as getting rid of, like if you notice, there's no longer an ILC science class. We've basically kept the ILC English, the study skills. Is where, where, where we're trying to go to is more of a co-teaching inclusion model. We want students to be taught by content teachers supported by special education. And that's where we're going. Our, you know, we're, we're doing really well in English, our data shows it. And our math, we still have, you know, we still have a little ways to go. And I, I think if, if we move in that direction and we have students sitting in front of content teachers with the support that they're required through their education plan, I think we can hopefully maybe boost up some of those scores.
And I just want to say that one of our advantages in this is that Principal Burke's certification is math. He's a certified math teacher and taught math for a number of years. So he's bringing that expertise to the program of studies and to thinking about how we're, you know, best providing the sports and services for our students.
Great.
So you mentioned that, that English was, the, the English scores, the things were going well. Was that previously more of an inclusion model?
Um, yeah, and we're, if, if you look back, we're still keeping what, it's no longer called ILC English, but what we call English. We're still keeping that. And part of it is too, is as we are going through making the changes, we have to make sure we have the staff to run the classes and do what we want it to do. So that played part of a role as far as making sure we could cover what we were putting out there and proposing. The next one would be page 56.
Kevin, just a quick note, on, on the top of 54, I think, right below the paragraph that has the language struck about autism and intellectual, the.
Yes.
The course descriptions, it just needs to be changed, the word description needs to be changed there slightly.
Oh, yeah, spelling.
Before, before we release it, for primetime.
Thank you.
Yep. You read something, you've seen it a million times, it spells itself to you, and then it's only when somebody else looks at it, they go, oh, right.
Yep.
Thank you for pointing that out. The intensive instructional support is a program that came in actually this year due to students that we had coming up through ninth grade. And that was a change determined by the special ed director last year, which is why currently right now, we didn't have a need for our behavior program, but we had a need for this program. And this is reflective of that as far as the courses that are offered within that program. And it is a self-contained class.
It's a self, what did you say?
Self-contained class.
How many students are in that class generally?
Between six to eight, pending. The Excel program, as I just mentioned, this is on page 58. The Excel program, there wasn't really a need with what we had in the high school this year, but what's coming up once again from Wrightbrook, the special ed director saying, we are going to need an Excel program. So the changes in that kind of reflect, instead of, in the past, it was a self-contained program. What we want to do and to move it into our high school for next year to support students coming up is to still have the Excel program, which is a behavior program. But the students are going to move around our school with support, with a pair that moves with them. And they'll still have what is called a life skills class, which we'll go through to, to help them manage some of the behaviors that they are dealing with. Page 60. As I was going through this with the special education teacher, we just figured we could get rid of this in the program of studies. It, it was a little outdated and not really necessary. So we struck it from the program of studies.
And Kevin, I, I think that this, that those decisions are wise. I, I do think though, that what, some of the coursework that you've just gone over, and I'm going to continue to beat on this drum perpetually. We've just went through an array of services that we provide in a high-quality way that the charter schools in the valley don't provide to their students. And I think that that contrast, which I have urged the local newspaper to cover more thoroughly, it's right there in black and white. We, and, and we have the documented evidence of how inclusion is working in our English program and other things that we do. I, I just think it's time, you know, to, to be, to be really frank and, and upfront with anyone who's paying attention to, to our discussion as part of the ongoing debate. That, you know, the governor has come out in favor of expanding the number of these schools. That is a, that is not a completely thought-through idea. If that's a polite way to put it, I think it's a bad idea, to be blunt. And this is an example of why. The, the services that public schools in the valley provide, East Hampton being an excellent example of that, overwhelmingly offer, offer the kind of support services that the clientele for charter schools don't require. And that speaks to the mission of charter schools being a far narrower one than they were originally charged to do. And I know that the governor will say, but they're public schools. But it's interesting that they're public schools that don't have this range and depth and diversity of support for the wide range of learners that the public includes. The public includes every child. And if you include every child, you need to be excellent in this, as we are. Not just excellent in a few things. And, and so I, I, I want to emphasize that the courses that you just went over and the changes that you're making and the, and the evolution in, in the program are yet another example of something that can only be received here in East Hampton and should be properly funded by the Commonwealth because of that service that we provide.
And maybe I could just take a moment to mention, as many of you may know, Senator Rosenberg is doing a couple of gatherings here in Western Massachusetts wanting to get feedback from those of us in public school districts about examples like that. What is it that, you know, is occurring in our schools that's not occurring in charter schools? You know, what is the difference that we see? What do we see as a discrepancy? So, you know, he's out here on a fact-finding trip. And all of the superintendents have gotten an email from the collaborative to provide examples of that. And that Senator Rosenberg is wanting to receive examples of that from us. So it's another opportunity for us to have a voice in this discussion.
Sorry, it took you a few.
So moving on to the technology department, which is pages 61 through 63 and 69. We have some new courses being offered. Business 1 and Business 2 are courses that are pathway courses. So, and some of these actually have accreditation, which means through some of the local colleges, Holy Community College, these students can actually take their completion of their courses and bring it to the colleges. They go there and get college credit for those courses. And actually, Ms. Cannon, who was up here, does a lot to actually make that happen, so.
She does.
The Advanced Placement Computer Science Principles is a new AP class, which is going to be. We've put that in there. We haven't in the past, if you look at it, haven't been able to get enough student enrollment. But the computer teacher wanted to put that in there with the possibility that maybe we could see if, maybe there is some interest out there, so. Enrollment has been tough to get in there, it's, it's a tough class. We've actually ended up offering that online for students before, and it's, it is a tough class.
And, and part of the toughness is that it's the, I believe, the latest data, it's the biggest single gender disparity course in the entire AP curriculum. It is the one where, if you take 50/50 to be the normal distribution, that's the one that's the most overwhelmingly male. And so we're really trying, you know, there's a, there's an extraordinary, offering this course and making the efforts that you are is extraordinarily important because the young women in East Hampton, who might not conceive of this as part of their preparation, need to be encouraged to take, to take this class. It's a field that's overwhelmingly dominated by male students and male test takers. And we as a society lose out if we take, say, to half of our brainpower, no, 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 you don't need to be, to be involved in, in the study of computer science. In this day and age, it's, it's an outrage. And I'm glad that, that, that we're paying attention to, to encouraging people to take that class.
That's interesting, because the one student that we had take it recently was a female, so.
So you must be doing something right, Kevin.
The other classes are Design Technology 1 and 2 and the Structural Design and Engineering Technology. These are classes that, even though they're new, these are classes we had before when we first moved into the high school with our Design Technology Lab, with the CAD. We had a 3D printer involved, we ran that for the first year. And the hope is, is, you know, one of the things that obviously we would, this would be a position that we would need to hire to actually run these classes. We don't have a teacher that teaches this currently. But the hope is, is that, right now, we, we did have a large freshman class coming this year, we have another large class coming in. It's, it's tough keeping our class sizes down, and one of the things we need are electives. And this is a great space in our school. And, this is a great space in our school. And with the pathways program and the chapter seventy-four as far as criminal justice, which I know Polly Parker is trying to push forward and, and might even bring some more money into our district, this is one of those positions that, A, would help out our school as far as numbers go and the electives, and, and B, provide us with an opportunity to use the space that was provided to us by our community.
And again, as in every budget year, we will always look at reallocation of resources to think about, you know, what are our priorities, what are the things that we need, and, and consider that.
But, it's your assessment that if the, and you're talking about the courses now that are on pages-
Those are-
Sixty-nine?
Sixty-nine, those courses description.
Right. So, if those, if those courses were offered, it's your, it's your sense that they would draw?
Yes, yes. They have drawn in the past, and they would draw, yeah. I mean, some of the stuff in, in the past, when I've seen them, I mean, the stuff that comes out of those classes are incredible. The kids get to work on CAD programs, which is great, which definitely, I really like, because when you go in there and watch it, there's a real good use of, of math, but there's also a good use of computer knowledge that's in there. And, then they take those, what they've actually designed, and then they can create it either through a CNC router with wood or through a 3D printer. And, it's, it's pretty incredible to see the process where a kid can create something on a computer through a CAD program and then actually watch it be developed. And it's, it actually, it prepares them for the business. It's a very vote-centered class, too, with a lot of support.
Yeah, if there's anything that speaks to the dual mission of college and career-ready in our curriculum, it's, it's a section of classes like this. And, I appreciate what you've said. I know, I know that we're, we're talking about numbers, which brings me back to the greatest sense, source of numbers leaving the city. This is why we need to refinance the way we handle charter schools so that cities like East Hampton can offer courses like this to that member of the public who choose to educate themselves in their, in their home city. This is a terrific, you know, suite of classes for folks who want to work the day they graduate, and for folks who are going to graduate and go on to pursue higher education. Their both groups are going to be extraordinarily well-served by these classes. We should offer them, we should find a way to hire the faculty that are necessary, and, and the results, you know, are just extraordinary. I've seen some of the results as well, and it's, it's an incredible array of academic and vocational skills. And it's, and it's super, and it's authentic learning. The kids, you know, you can see, they know whether they've passed the test by, you know, does it stand up? Does it, does it do what it was designed to do? It's an, it's a beautifully internally and organic source of education.
I have one question or suggestion. I'm wondering if we should, this is trivial, but it just strikes me, I wonder if we should be calling this instead of Technology Department, like Business and Technology Department? To encompass, to, to better represent, for instance, Accounting one and two, Business one and two, I mean, the computer sciences are business, information technology, I mean, the multimedia, all of that stuff falls under a category of business in some way, shape, or form, as opposed to strictly technology. Just a thought. It just strikes me that Business and Technology would be more all-encompassing and more accurately represent the nature of the courses offered.
Not just innovation department.
I mean, I agree. It, right away, it says the pre, the three primary areas of focus are business, computer, and the technology, so.
And I just see technology as a very, more, much more specific and, and not necessarily inclusive of a broader business approach or perspective.
Definitely something we could revisit and think about.
Yes, so, I just throw that out there for consideration. Makes sense.
Does make sense. The last thing on page seventy-seven that I have to present is the foreign ling, language waiver policy. And, once again, the only, besides CTEC students, because of their vocation, we don't have them do a language because they just wouldn't be able to get the other credit requirements in order to graduate. The only reason to waive a foreign language would be determined by a special education team due to an disability. So, there's a lot, lot in here that, when I sat down with the special education director, we, we didn't agree with as far as why a, a language should be waived. So, we just eliminated it out of there. And if you, if you go back to the beginning of, page number it is, if you go back to page seventy-five, it does specify that CTEC and Excel students are exempt from the requirement. So, that part is specified at the beginning of the world language.
Can I ask a general question?
Certainly.
I saw throughout the addition of a sentence about how for the AP courses, students were required to pay, take and pay for the AP exam. And I was wondering if there's any financial support for students whose families can't necessarily afford those exams?
So, there is. Any student who is free and reduced, unfree and reduced, actually gets that exam free and reduced. And I think it comes out to twelve dollars, at least, that's what it was last year, for them to pay, as opposed to, I think it's ninety-one dollars is what it was last year. So, that, that is, that is in place, too. And, we talk to students about that, too, because some students don't want to have the free and reduced, and they don't want to go through lunch like that, as far as the stigma of going through lunch and getting free and reduced. And we have that conversation with, well, you don't have to necessarily do it in lunch, but if you do it, it at least saves you money through the AP exam. We also have worked with students and parents in the past. There, there is an administration fee that comes with taking the AP, which the school gets back, which we can, we can use to help subsidize some of the students that they might not qualify for free and reduced. But, if you're taking three tests, or if you have two students and one's taking two tests and one's taking another test, ninety-one dollars adds up quickly. And we have worked with families in the past, making sure that, that they take the test. We've never said, no, you're not taking the test because you couldn't afford it. That's never, never ever been part of it. The, this came through initially when we got a MEMZ grant, which really helped grow our program. We're no longer part of that grant, but going through that grant, and if you look at what the college board recommends, keeping that, keeping that requirement that all students take the test makes the AP program a much stronger program.
Okay.
Kevin, can I just check on the, the language use? I thought that the grant went away.
Yes.
Right. It was, I, I thought I heard you say, we're no longer part of it, but the money went away. The seed money was there, and we all talked about what would happen, but it wasn't that we opted out. It's that the, the, the original funders got it rolling and then said, now here's a, here's an extraordinary cost that you have to figure out a way, and you guys have done a splendid job of, of working that out, but-
Yes, you are correct.
Okay.
Are there other grants available for, for this, or it's just kind of started, gets you up and running, and then?
It was a program that was put into place, oh goodness, how many years ago?
Seven.
Six, six years ago?
Seven years ago.
And, you know, major funding for school districts that wanted to become part of this, this MEMZ program, Massachusetts Math and Science Institute, I think it was. And I think it was funded through Exxon, as I recall.
Microsoft.
Microsoft.
Right. Bill Gates had, had his thumb in there.
Yeah, and I, and I think Exxon was in there as well. But, at any rate, so, it, it provided us tremendous support to get our AP courses in place, our teachers trained, gave lots of supports to our students. And the goal was to get more students taking AP courses, so that students who might not think they could take an AP course were able to do that. And the, the fees were paid and, and all of that. And then, the funding cycle for the grant expired, and we haven't seen anything like that since that, that we've been able to apply for. So, we've been trying, as Peter acknowledged, and as Kevin's talking about, to replicate that to the greatest degree we can with the funding that we have. If the grant becomes available again, we will certainly apply.
We wouldn't miss it.
Yeah, it was phenomenal.
We could also point out that the marginal cost of producing an additional AP exam and grading it is a small fraction of what the college board charges. And the college board, as a, as a quote nonprofit organization, has a stranglehold on the gateway for most students who are applying for higher education. You know, you're free to take the test or not, not really. And, and then, these, these fees. So, I, I think the college board as well should be commended for any effort that they make to reduce the costs, not just for folks who are on reduced lunch or free lunch-
Right.
-but for all students. This is our de facto, right, you know, college admission test as a nation, and, you know, it, it should not be privately paid, household by household.
Right.
Any child that wants to go to college and wants to take these courses should be allowed to take these examinations at no cost.
Yeah.
And is that, I'm sorry, if I can ask one more question?
Go.
Is that something that the, the ability to have this at the reduced rate, or to even sort of seek these other creative sources of funding, is that something that students would be aware of when they're looking at this program of studies? Or, would there be some students and families who are looking at this and see that line about payment and are put off from thinking that that's even a possibility?
Well, currently, we, obviously, we don't have anything in the program of studies that states that we do work with families.
I think it's pretty well-known.
Pretty well-known, that's sort of, I guess there's one-
They, they sit down with guidance counselors generally, too, that know that we work with them, and the first class you can take is, as a tenth grader, so at that point, you're, you're not dealing with freshmen that are walking in here. They've, you know, this is, this is at least their second year, and then the rest of the classes are offered up at either eleventh or twelfth grade. So, and we, we try to communicate as clearly as we can, obviously, once we're in there, and the expectations, and the teachers try to clearly communicate.
And the guy, and guidance counselors work very closely with our students, sharing that kind of information.
And the trick is that we don't have the budget to make it a, a, a sort of contractual pledge. You know, we can't pledge to be able to do all that we'd like to do for every family every year, which I think is part of why we can't put it in writing in a way that would suggest that it's a, it's an obligation on the part of the-
Right.
-the school system. It's just something we, we desperately hope to do, and do everything we can to, to make sure that the families that you're talking about aren't discouraged because of that reason from, from doing this.
And just to point out, just to point out, too, I mean, we have, you just accepted a gift earlier on from the Helping Hands Society. There was two hundred dollars of that, that we purposely put aside to help students that couldn't afford things that specifically were high school-related. And we try to do things like that all the time to support our students that can't necessarily afford the AP exams or can't afford their senior dues, so, their class dues, or other things that come with the high school. So, we, we try on a regular basis to make sure we support those students.
My experience with guidance usually is that they're very savvy at figuring out who can, who's hesitating, why they're hesitating, and then finding a way to make it happen so that those kids that really will benefit get the same chance.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Can I make a motion to accept the minutes from the January twelfth, two thousand sixteen meeting?
Before we do that, Peter?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you suspend that for one minute? We need to vote to approve the program of studies.
Oh, right. A motion to, sorry. A motion to approve the program of studies as submitted and amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Keep up the good work.
Yeah, that's great. What a great program.
It is.
It's an extraordinary program, and it's so rich, and it's so diverse, and, and I do think that, it's sort of like that misspelled word. If you don't look closely, right, at, at, at the East Hampton school system, you may miss things because you think you know-
Right.
-what's going on. And, and every year, I, as someone who thinks of myself as paying close attention, marvel at the things that I didn't know or didn't recall, and, and for the range of, of the students, it's just extraordinary.
That's why we want people to come here before they make their choices.
Right. Make it an informed decision.
Anyone who does will be impressed.
And have a wonderful experience.
And speaking into that, the, the PTO is actually running a kindergarten informational night next Tuesday, the second, from six to eight, at the beautiful high school. So, we encourage families who are, you know, considering or have a kindergarten-age student for next year to come, and you'll hear from the principals and other parents, and, and the fourth-grade students as well. So, we look forward to seeing you there.
That's great. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, there is, Peter has made a motion to approve the minutes from the January twelfth, two thousand sixteen regular meeting. Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor? One abstention?
Abstention.
Okay, and then we have warrants and payroll.
I'll begin with payroll. I move to approve the school payroll dated, dated January twenty-one, two thousand sixteen in the amount of four hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the school payroll dated January twenty-first, two thousand sixteen in the amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated January twenty-first, two thousand sixteen in the amount of three hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred seven dollars and thirty-seven cents.
There's a motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated January twenty-first, two thousand sixteen in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.